And good morning councillors, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this morning's meeting of the Mersey Port Health Committee. The published agenda for today's meeting is online on Liverpool City Council's website, and also accessible from the other constituency authorities' websites as well by separate links. Certainly a welcome to everyone viewing this morning's live feed and live stream. And in the event of any audio issues during the proceedings, please note for members participating that with your agreement I will mute proceedings and then bring you back in individually so we can restore clarity of audio. With that in mind, before we start, I just need to conduct a quick check. So there's a number of members visible on screen at the moment. So starting with yourself councillor Howard, welcome to this morning's meeting. Can you hear us okay?
Yeah, I can hear fine, thank you.
Thank you councillor Thompson.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Marret. Thank you councillor Jones.
Yes, good morning.
Thank you councillor Cummings.
Good morning all, and yes.
Councillor Hayes.
Yes, I can hear you, thank you.
Excellent, thank you councillor O'Brien.
Yes, thank you.
Perfect, thank you councillor Morris.
Yes, can hear you, thank you.
Who have we missed so far councillor Simic?
Yes, thank you, yes, thank you.
Councillor Prince, can you hear us okay?
Yes, thank you.
And councillor, good morning councillor Williams as well.
Yes, here you find, thank you.
Excellent, okay. With that in mind, we can now move into the actual items of business today. In terms of our first item today, in the absence of our ordinarily appointed chair, can I invite nominations from members for chair for the duration of this meeting, please?
I'll nominate.
Just confirm that again, Dave.
I'll nominate myself.
Okay, is that seconded by any other member, please? If you just indicate by saying clearly so it's for purposes of clarity if anyone wants to second that.
Seconded councillor.
Thank you. Is a member agreeable to that? If you could raise your hands on screen clearly those visible, just so it just for purposes of rather than muting, it's just assisting. In which case that's acceptable and congratulations councillor Cummings for the duration of this meeting. So over now to our first item which is declaration of interests. Do members have any to declare today, please? No, that's great, thank you councillor Cummings and colleagues. Can I refer you to the minutes of our last meeting? If you look on your published agenda, we have pages one through to five which were the minutes of the 12th of March, some time ago now. I hope you've all had the opportunity to review those and if you have any comments, if you'd like to address those now, if that's okay with you chair?
That's okay with me to hear, just a further point. I don't think I should be chair and the reasons, the reasons being I don't have the minutes in front of me and I don't have the agenda, so I'd be working very blind. So I think we need to select some.
Okay, okay councillor Cummings, happy to exercise discretion in that regard if you're comfortable with that. Therefore I will revert to remaining members on the meeting and again if one of you would like to volunteer or nominate one of your colleagues to chair for proceedings, just for procedural reasons.
I want to nominate Helen.
That'll be councillor Thompson, is that seconded? Thank you councillor Prince. Is everyone agreeable to that? Thank you everyone, much appreciated. And again Helen, you're now in the chair for the remaining of the meeting. And again, I've introduced the minutes of our last meeting. So Helen, if you'd like to invite comments from members of the committee.
Thank you very much. So yeah, if everybody who's got the minutes would take a quick look or cast your mind back to when you went through them. And any comments first of all for accuracy?
I just add my name for the, there was no apology sent in for my name.
Thank you, I'll add that now councillor Brian.
Any other comments? Thank you very much. So are we agreed that those are an accurate representation of our meeting?
Clearly.
I guess everybody should raise their hand, should they?
I believe councillor Prince has raised his hand, John. If you want to unmute your microphone, please John.
Yeah, no, I'm just agreeing with the last meeting.
Oh, that's smashing, thank you. If everyone's happy with the minutes then we can take those in a agreed record and arrange for Helen to sign those separately in due course.
Okay, thank you. So are there any matters arising?
I believe chair that matters arising in terms of the issues raised our last meeting in terms of Covid are going to be picked up in part through the annual chief port health officer report and college reporting will address them then as well.
Thank you. So moving on now to the quarterly report, first of October to the 31st of December 2019. I would invite McCullough to talk us through those, please.
Thank you chair. Okay, so I'm hoping all members have a copy of the quarterly report. Quite a short report because I do cover most of these aspects in the annual report. So the purpose of this report is to advise members of the enforcement work undertaken and the project, training and promotional work undertaken by the authority during the first of January 2020 to 31st of March 2020. Members will know that there's an income table there and that will show that we will have, we've had a slight increase in revenue during quarter four period, a little bit better than the last two previous quarters, quarter two and quarter three. And during quarter four in regards to official imported food checks, officers dealt with 4,594 imported food related queries. We had 522 consignments imported and those were subject to ID checks, full checks and sealed checks. And in terms of samples, officers undertook 39 samples of various food products and details of those are held in annex four to the report. And in terms of the results of those products, one of them was returned unsatisfactory, which was a product of tea due to pesticides present in the product. In regards to rejected consignments, we had zero rejected during the quarter four period and a total of five consignments referred inland to local authority. And members will see that the reasons for referrals are also included in the table there. In relation to international health regulations, during the last quarter, officers continued to fulfil 100% requests of ship sanitation issuing 34 ship sanitation exemptions certificates and zero sanitation controls certificates and boarding 13 vessels. We also boarded one vessel that had been referred from another seaport. And one of the key issues during the quarter was that we were notified and had to respond to an outbreak of coronavirus. And as you're aware, the Port Health are category one responder in aspects of control of communicable disease. And so we had to undertake an immense amount of work and further information on that is detailed in the AGM report and I will cover that when I talk about the coronavirus outbreak during the AGM report. In terms of representation at meetings, officers still continue to make representation at meetings and attending 35 meetings. And we also still proactively promote the work of Port Health by attending career days and conducting lectures and during that period we undertook one school career day. And that sums up the quarterly report for members.
Okay, thank you very much McCullough. And can I just apologize? I think I've probably caused a bit of confusion trying to look at the papers online, flipping back and forth between teams and the papers. So we've ended up looking at the last quarter, which should have been item four. So sorry, apologies for that, we're doing the items out of order. And does anybody have any questions or comments from McCullough, please? No? And yes, councillor Marret.
Sorry, obvious question, just what was the tea and where was it from that had pesticides in it?
Sorry councillor Marret, I couldn't hear that question clearly, could you please repeat?
Sorry, I was just asking about what type of tea, where was it from that had the pesticides in it?
And most of the tea will come from China, so that tea would have been from China. It is subject to controls or pesticides. So it was Chinese tea.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything further? And I have a question about, and I don't know if you want to take this question now or take it after you've talked about the whole of last year. But recently we've been hearing about Covid-19 outbreaks in meat processing plants. And I wondered if the Port Authority is involved in any way in investigating how that come about or how it's originated?
No, unfortunately we wouldn't be participating in any type of investigation for a meat processing plant. And our jurisdiction only covers the border, so the jurisdiction of the Port Health Authority. And we don't have any meat processing plants within our jurisdiction and so that would be for an inland authority.
Okay, so there's no role for ports in terms of imported meat and whether that's had some sort of a role in the outbreaks?
And if it is traced back, I mean, products of meat are already subject to controls and will be subject to sporadic testing unless it's dictated in legislation where we have to do mandatory testing. So if it's identified that it originates outside the EU, then yes, they would introduce measures. And we already have that process in place where we will undertake reinforced checks if it's identified that a meat product that originates outside the EU has a form of contamination. And then we would, yes, participate in that. But I'm not aware at the moment of any notification of potential contamination from Covid for a meat product outside the EU or originating from a third country.
Thank you very much. And so are there any further comments from anybody? Yes, councillor Cummings.
Thank you. It's just, I'm just asking a question here about the process of batches of food stocks. Could you, could you just give me a short explanation in the context of checking batches of food stocks for coronavirus? Do you do that? Do you not do that? If so, how do you do it?
I'm not aware at the moment in regards to coronavirus. And we haven't had any confirmation or information from Public Health England or the EU Commission or any third countries to advise us that there is concerns of potential transmission of coronavirus in food products. And if that was to occur, they would implement measures and we would be advised by one of our competent authorities, whether it's DEFRA or the Food Standards Agencies, that we need to increase measures, and which would be increasing official checks and potentially sampling those products to identify potential Covid. But I'm not aware at the moment of any scientific information that confirms that there is the potential transmission of Covid in food. And as members are probably already aware, it is a respiratory communicable disease at the moment. So I know that the disease is evolving and I know that they are undertaking investigations on the disease consistently each day to establish its transmission. And I know that is changing with time, but currently at the moment, I'm not aware that it is transmissible in food.
Thanks councillor McCullough. I was just asking a question in the context of the rapid of food stocks, that's all. Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, so just to add that then, all food products are subject to food hygiene regulations and would help adequate plastic systems in place to ensure that there's no cross-contamination. So your average food processing plant, at least in third countries and within the EU, have to adhere to strict hygiene regulations which prevent any type of cross-contamination and that it could occur from any type of contaminant spread from man to potential food. So those processes are subject to inspections on a regular basis. In the UK, we have our food hygiene inspections, so they are constantly scrutinized to make sure that there is no cross-contamination in food to the food products and those systems are already in place.
Thank you. Anything, any further questions or comments? And John Prince, councillor Prince.
I'm just wondering what testing facilities you have within the Port Health Authority for the staff members, et cetera? With regards to Covid.
Sorry councillor Prince, was that testing facilities?
Yes.
And the council has already put a number of systems in place to protect staff. And initially at the very beginning of the Covid outbreak, we followed the Public Health England government guidance, which was if anybody exhibited any symptoms, that they would need to self-isolate at home. And at that time, a number of staff did express that they potentially thought that they exhibited symptoms and we followed the process and procedure that was recommended by government, which was self-isolation at home. At that time, we didn't have any availability to test the staff. And since then, I haven't been notified by any of my staff that anyone has any symptoms of Covid. But I know that just generally around the UK and I know that certainly Liverpool City Council do have provisions to test staff if they do identify themselves exhibiting symptoms of Covid.
I'll call them up.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? No, so are we happy to note that report and then move backwards in our agenda? I do apologize to item three where we're looking at the report on activities for 2019 to 2020. And everybody happy to move on? Thank you. So I'll call on McCullough again to talk us through the report on last year, please.
Thank you councillor. Good morning everybody, it's nice to see everyone despite the current circumstances. And so the purpose of this annual report is to advise members of the enforcement work undertaken by the authority. And in addition to the proactive project, training and promotional work that's been undertaken by the authority during the period of the first of April 2019 and the 31st of March 2020. And now I'm aware it is a very detailed report, so I will just pick out some of the key issues that the authority's experienced over the financial year. So in regards to background information, members will notice that the designated status of the inspection facility has now changed. So previously in my previous reports, I referred to the status of the inspection facility at the port as a border inspection post. But since then, we have the introduction of official control regulations. And so the status of the inspection facility has changed to a border control post in accordance with official control regulations that were introduced during the year. So the inspection facility was subject to an audit by the Food Standards Agency and we were successful in achieving that designation. So in line with other major ports around the UK, we are now a BCP. And that's why I will refer to the inspection facility throughout the report. In regards to staffing resources, I'd just bring members to the intention of that we still have one port health officer vacancy. So despite recruiting a port health officer and an import control officer throughout the year, we are still currently carrying a vacancy with the intention that this post will be filled by the end of the year and at the latest during the first quarter of the financial year. In terms of processors, one of the key issues in terms of processors was the migration of our current imported food control system Tracers and to Tracers new technology, which amended the notification system for imports that arrive through the port of Liverpool, and changing existence of officers where they have to undergo training and to learn the new system, as well as also to support agents with the transfer to the new system. In terms of business continuity, the authority placed a lot of focus on business continuity at the beginning of the year. And our main focus then was to look at the potential impact to the service in relation to the EU exit. But obviously towards the end of the year, members will be aware that we had a coronavirus outbreak. And so we then had to focus our attentions on dealing with the impact of the service due to the global pandemic situation. And we created a BCP specific to Covid. In addition to that, a number of risk assessments were designed to ensure that our main priority was to protect our staffing resource line so that we could still continue providing a service during the outbreak. And so a number of documents were created by the business operations team leader and myself to ensure that our main focus would be ensuring that we can protect our staffing line. And various different measures were implemented to achieve that. By the start of the UK lockdown on the 23rd of March, and we were able to allocate 87% of the team remote working from home, which is a very quick response and we was already prepared for that because we had initially started the process of preparing for agile working for the team. So we was able to action that process very quickly. And by doing that, we managed to reserve our staffing resources while also maintaining a good service delivery of all our statutory functions. In terms of workload, in preparation for the UK's exit from the EU, officers have undertaken an immense amount of work and I will definitely bring members to the attention of the fact that officers attended 77 EU exit related meetings. And the work that involves preparation for the EU exit has so far accumulated to 1,622 hours of operational work. Now, to ensure that this didn't impact on the frontline operational work and those staffing resources, and I ring fenced a majority of our operational work to the chief officer, the team leaders and also the official veterinarians so that we did not have any impact on the service delivery of our frontline work. And demands at the later part of the year, once again, were focused on dealing and responding to the global pandemic outbreak of coronavirus. And the authority was required to attend a number of Public Health England meetings. In addition to that, we had to relook at our systems and procedures to ensure that we could adapt and change to any cautionary measures that we implemented in relation to the Covid, as well as also providing advice and guidance to our agents and importers. There were processes at the port that needed amending. And I'm sure councillor Morris will also agree with me that, you know, that took a lot of work as well because I've had a number of conversations with councillor Morris. And also we attended a number of meetings for pilots because there was concerns of potential cross-contamination and Covid for that aspect. And also the port operator and the harbour master. So that in itself created an immense amount of work for the authority during that period. And in relation to income, members will note that we had a decrease in revenue in relation to POAO. And however, in regards to FNAO, we have had an increase, which is, hopefully, I would like to see that that maybe would counterbalance the loss of revenue for POAO. But unfortunately it hasn't, not at this moment in time. And that might be something that will materialize as time goes on. In relation to other revenue, the authority successfully secured money from the Food Standards Agency to enable the authority to prepare for the United Kingdom's exit from the European Union. And that equated to £180,000. And because of that, we were able to increase the staffing resources and we funded two positions because of that. We also applied for a grant in terms of official control regulations and the work that was associated with that. And we were successful in securing £20,000 for that. And members will also note that we also applied for an imported food surveillance sampling grant to assist with the work that's associated with surveillance sampling and we received £37,499. Unfortunately, the surveillance sampling grant had to be suspended because of the Covid. And it is, I am hopeful that we will try to reenact that once we start recovering the service and obviously coming out of the outbreak situation. Other issues in terms of imported food checks, during the year, officers still continue to undertake a number of official checks and they undertook 1,946 POAO consignments with a total of four consignments that were rejected and either red dispatched to the country of origin or destroyed and details of those are held in the portal in reports. In terms of other projects that the authority undertook for official controls, we did commence a project as well called Operation Opsan. The aim of Operation Opsan was to identify and assess the existence of criminality within the UK alcohol market to focus on adulterated spirits. Officers carried out this project as a stage approach where we first of all gathered data. And when we reached the stage of wanting to physically sample some alcohol beverages, and that's when the Covid occurred. So unfortunately, once again, it was necessary to suspend that project. But I am hopeful that once again, as we recover during the next financial year, we will be able to reinstate that project. In terms of official control regulations, I had advised members previously in my last AGM that this was going to be a massive under task for the authority because it was a complete overhaul of our existing legislation. And the implementation of official control regulations was a change to EU legislation that the UK would need to implement irrelevant of whether we exited the EU. And so we still have to progress through all the amendments and implementation of the OCR regs as and when they occurred. As a result, that created a number of work and responsibilities to the authority where we had to retrain staff to ensure staff competences in terms of the new legislation. We had to make continuous representation at meetings from central government and also EU level and also to participate in legislative consultation. In addition to that, as I said earlier on, we hosted a visit to ensure that we were successful in achieving the audit that would enable us to then be designated as a BCP. As well as that, the authority agreed to undertake a European product surveillance project. The aim of this was to prepare the authority for when the UK does actually exit the EU. And we're currently working through the transitional process at the moment. The European project aimed to gather intelligence on EU goods that enter the port via predominantly the ferry terminals. At the moment, ferry products that arrive from outside Europe or even inside Europe because they will be subject to checks. And we don't have any computer system, they're not subject to checks. There is no way at the moment of assessing what products potentially will be subject to official controls. And it was essential that we needed to know that in order to prepare and ensure that we have adequate staffing resource levels, systems and procedures in place. So it was agreed that we would undertake this project and during the period of 2019-20, officers analysed 30,582 ferry manifests. Now, because there's no existing computer system in place to support analysing that data, I'm sure members can appreciate that is a very onerous task from the admin level to have to work through all those documents one by one to assess what type of products and may be subject to official controls when we do exit the EU. And we found that the project in itself identified ongoing issues. So a lot of the time, agents would describe a product on a manifest as a food product. So that then led to officers having to email and ask what type of food product. And then they would be very vague with their response. So officers would then need to find out what ingredients potentially could be subject to checks, where these products originate from. Sometimes the agent didn't have that information. So we were constantly finding obstacles just to try to assess and identify information. And so so far, the project, once again, had to be suspended towards the end of quarter four due to the Covid outbreak. But it is something that we essentially have to reenact and we actually have reenacted the project while we are remotely working and while we're dealing with the Covid. And we have once again reenacted this project because it is crucial that we try to establish the number of products that potentially will arrive within the port that will be subject to checks by the EU transition period at the end. So looking ahead, please Michael, I'd like to note there that there is a typo error. It should actually say looking ahead towards 2021. Instead of 2019-20, the authority will continue to engage with HMRC to try to establish data that they have, where are also participating in a central government project and working closely with DEFRA to establish what products will be subject to checks. DEFRA at the moment have provided some data. We have collated our data and they don't match. And with the data that DEFRA have provided, it would require a considerable increase in staffing resources, around 15 times the number that we currently have. With the data that we've collated, we would probably need an increase of about five times the current staffing resources, which once again. With the data that we've collated, we would probably need an increase of about five times the current staffing resources, which once again is quite significant. So at the moment, the focus of the EU project is to try to establish the credible data. And the data is very varied at the moment. So we want to try to establish how we can make the data more accurate so we can then determine an effective number of staffing resources by the end of the year. In terms of international controls, the authority still continues to undertake international health regulations, issuing ship sanitation, trying to prevent any further spread of any other types of communicable disease. And we still continue to undertake vector surveillance in accordance with international health regulations. Unfortunately, similar to other projects, it's not a priority project. So we've had to suspend that in favour of dealing with the COVID outbreak. And in addition to that, as I said earlier on, members are aware that we were notified of an outbreak, however, Port Health already started preparations for an outbreak before the date that it was officially announced. Because we do receive information of countries when there is an outbreak of disease and we will put enhanced measures in place for, to ensure the protection. So with that, we'd already been attending meetings by Public Health England. We'd already started to prepare our food premises with any potential implications there. And also all agencies and all necessary measures of the border at the airport, at the seaport, to make sure that there was enhanced measures that would be needed for any potential outbreak. So by the time the outbreak was declared by the UK and they implemented lockdown measures, we'd already forewarned and prepared all our clients and agents of the potentiality and measures that would need to be in place. In addition to that, the and the UK government implemented a number of easement adaptations to official controls and also the issuance of ship sanitation. The key focus is preventing the spread of the coronavirus. And my key focus was sustaining staffing resources and protecting staff while also maintaining an effective service of the key services that we provide, namely control of communicable disease and also imported food clearances. So with that, for the issuance of ship sanitation, in order to limit the spread of the coronavirus, it was agreed by the Association of Port Health, approved by Public Health England, that easement adaptations would be implemented to mitigate any potential spread of the virus while also protecting staffing resources. And we adapted the ship sanitation process by ceasing all physical inspections of premises, sorry, vessels. So officers will still undertake ship sanitation inspections, but we will undertake documentation checks. And any any vessels that were highlighted as a high risk, only then would we undertake inspections if they identified any high risk to a public health. And and that is a consistent process that has been implemented by all UK ports. In addition to that, we had numerous meetings with pilots. We ensured that there was processes available, a critical vessel process was implemented and designed, the assistance by the harbour master, the pilots, to ensure that there were processes to mitigate any potential spread or anyone being exposed to potential COVID. And at the airport, UK legislation was introduced to close all food premises. And and for imported food, the EU also agreed that we would be able to undertake official checks on electronic documentation instead of hard copy documentation, which enabled officers to do clearances while remotely working from home. We initially decided that we would separate the team and introduce a COVID operational plan, which created a safety bubble for teams. So the teams were set, it was separated into three. The idea of this was to prevent any member of staff arriving and working and potentially contaminating the whole team. So by separating them at various different locations, any type of or any exposure to COVID would be contained and still protected, the remaining staffing resources. And for us, it, you know, it worked to our benefit. In regards to food safety, we still have to continue to undertake shopish enforcement and also monitor the beds. And and we did undertake some monitoring of the beds, but once again, all processes were risk rated and risk assessed with risk assessments in place to mitigate any potential exposure to COVID. And and, you know, so far that that worked fine for us. During the year, food hygiene visits were undertaken, but those ceased during the COVID. So the service will obviously need to reinstate those. And we've maintained close contact with all our food business premises, advising them of COVID restrictions that must be in place to adhere to the UK legislation and also restrictions that must be in place to also prevent any contamination to staff, customers and ensure that relevant P P is available to staff. And that's what we've been undertaking for this period. In regards to port representation at meetings, the authority still continues to make representation. And we attended one hundred and fifty one meetings during the course of two thousand nineteen and twenty. And we still continue to attend UK major port liaisons meetings. And similar to this meeting, all meetings now are carried out remotely. So we carry out meetings via Zoom or we carry out meetings via Teams. And and they have still proven very effective. In terms of training days during two thousand nineteen and twenty, officers and official veterinarians attended a total of nineteen training courses. And we are still investing in undergraduates and student environmental health practitioners. And we delivered one course to Liverpool John Moores University on import and on port health. And we also hosted a number of visits during the year. And we hosted a visit of seven delegates from the Food Standards Agency. And on a separate occasion, we hosted a visit from nineteen representatives of the NOTC Association and that attended from the UK and also the USA. We have prepared a time and promoting the work of Port Health and trying to encourage the NOTC Association to commence importing their products back through the port. And towards the year, we have started to see a number of those consignments arrive back through the port. So it is crucial that we still carry out promotional work and obviously host visits as and when we can, service permitting. And one of the key things then that we need to focus on for the forthcoming year, the main issue is the pandemic response and recovery. The service was amended and adapted. We changed processes, we implemented our B C Ps, we amended those. And it is an evolving situation. As the COVID evolves, it is essential that service also evolves with the key aim of still providing the key services that we have through the priority one services and the statutory functions. So with that, it is essential that we maintain an effective delivery of all our priority services. We're now at a stage where we need to recover or reset some of the services. So initially, the nonroutine services or nonstatutory services were suspended. We also suspended water sampling. And we're at a stage now where we're starting to recover. I have designed a business as usual plan because we will never be the same as how we were. I'm sure members are aware, nothing at the moment is the same as how we were and we are very unlikely to go back to how we was prior to the outbreak. So the idea is we've got this plan of how our service will look. We need, we needed to implement easement restrictions, follow the guidance of government while maintaining our service. And so with that, the authority will need to swiftly adapt its processes and systems. We will need to make sure that we keep adapting our risk assessments, we ensure that we have adequate supply of personal protective equipment and that we adapt into current situations to ensure the safety of all staffing resources. We have to stay abreast of the COVID legislation. It is subject to a constant review all the time. I think it's every three weeks, the UK legislation is reviewed. So we need to stay abreast of that and ensure effective implementation of that. We must ensure that all our staff are competently trained. The staff have to be aware of the new legislation, the public health guidance that's given and the new COVID legislation. So we have to keep staying abreast of that and ensure that all the staff are competently trained to also not only implement the legislation effectively, but also to guide our clients and customers. We have to continue to make representation at P H E meetings so we stay abreast of the of the changing situation of COVID, as well as designing a recovery plan to establish the business as usual. I mean, at that stage, I can confirm it has already been done. And we've already progressed through a working plan to start resetting the service in accordance with Liverpool City Council's guidelines and protocols, as well as the government guidance. In addition to that, unfortunately, the EU exit and the transition has not gone away. So it is also a main focus of the authority. By the end of the year, the UK will have exited the EU. And that, as we know from studies and also communications with central government, it will have a significant impact on port health. So we still need to prepare for that. The authority will still need to continue to prepare for the potential workload and the impact that's associated with that. We are continuing to do that by attending meetings, participating in working groups. But it is essential that we still undertake our own in-house European scoping project and progress with that as well. And we have since reenacted that following its suspension due to the COVID. Moving forward, the authority will need to develop and more. We need to ensure that we have effective communications with central government, establish the data and we're still awaiting the data from central government that they confirmed they have on the port of Liverpool. And I'm hopeful from a meeting that the business operations team needs to have attended last week, that we will get that data soon, which will enable me to prepare an effective level of staffing resources and start amending the processes and procedures and ensure that we have the adequate infrastructure available to deal with the impact and the workload associated with the transition. Financial implications, the work that we did undertake during twenty nineteen and twenty was covered in the budget. It was supplemented immensely by the funding that we received from the Food Standards Agency. And and it is essential that we still continue to apply for any government funding that's available to assist us with any associated work. And in conclusion, it has been a challenging year. In my entire career at Port Health, I'd say that this is, has been the most challenging year. But I probably won't speak too soon because we're obviously into the new financial year and still dealing with a pandemic outbreak as well as an EU transition. And but, you know, it has been an impact, you know, two two situations impacted on port health. Not only do we have preparation of the EU transition, but also a pandemic outbreak. I don't think anything more could occur that would impact on the service, you know. But because of, you know, internal systems that we have prepared, excellent B C Ps that we had in place. Not only that, the, you know, the diligence, the hard work and the resilience of the Port Health team to adapt to not only preparing for the EU exit, but just quickly adapting to the COVID situation. And credit to the team, they were absolutely fantastic. There was not an impact on the service. In fact, we received compliments from agents and importers on how they didn't, they didn't feel any change to the service level that we provided. So we've had a number of compliments from importers and agents. And that is definitely credit to the team and the structure that we have in place. And there's been demand on new legislation. We've had to have process changes. Staff have had to undertake an immense amount of training over the last quarter, not just relating to the official control regulations, but also associated with COVID. They have to undertake World Health Organisation training that was, that was, that was delivered. We had to undertake P H E training. They've had to learn new legislation. And in addition to that, I've also implemented agile working training to make sure that we are working effectively while working remotely. And they have all completed those and still carried on delivering a good service. So each of them obviously helped to maintain the key issue, which is the service delivery of our priority one functions. The new financial year will bring significant challenges and pressures for the team from a financial perspective because of the work that's required from the EU in terms of preparing the service for the EU transition and as well as the additional workload from the COVID. But from that, it is essential that we are prepared and that the key issues that I've mentioned earlier on in the report are definitely addressed and actioned. And that concludes the annual report for Meddy Port Health. And I open the floor to any questions, members.
Would John be in expressing our appreciation of all your hard work this last year, particularly or and the team, but particularly all the extra work that's been involved with regard to COVID nine, the COVID nineteen outbreak and also Brexit preparations? Thank you. So could that be noted in the minutes, please? Our appreciation for all of that. And I see that Dave Cummings has had his hand up for a little while. So and I will take your question or comment first, Dave.
Thanks, yeah. And I'd just like to echo what the chair has said with regard to Port Health, what you've done through this year is commendable. And I'm thanks very much for the report, Nicola. And one of the issues that came to mind through that report, first and foremost, the staffing and the workload after we leave the EU. It's inevitable, not only more staffing because of the workload. But I want to make that in what you've mentioned towards the end about effective communication with central government. And I'm of the assumption you've already made communication about the potential workload and further financing for staffing. Am I right on that?
Hello, councillor Cummings. Yes, most certainly. And, you know, from the very beginning of being aware that the UK potentially could exit the EU, that is something that not just myself, but all port authorities have made central government aware that we need some form of funding. And members will note that we do not have the luxury within our current budget to go out and recruit, you know, a comfortable number of staff. And because of that, we will need some support from central government to enable us to have those staffing resources available. The difficulty that we seem to be experiencing is while the Food Standards Agency did provide funding for twelve months, I can advise members that we have since secured another twelve month funding from the Food Standards Agency. To have a member of staff just for twelve months isn't very secure because the impact of the EU transition will be a prolonged period of time. And by the time we exit in December, it will be a gradual increase of official checks that will be implemented. And so we will need, you know, a healthy amount of staff to carry on doing those checks and before the revenue will start to support that staffing structure. And we've made this very clear to but funding is an issue from them as well. And I know that they have announced that there is funding available. And DEFRA announced that there is funding available, but it's who and when that funding will be made available to Port Health, we're not too sure. And sorry, councillor, if I could just invite Chris. I don't know if you just want to advise members of the last meeting that was attended and just confirm that information that I've just said.
Yeah, no worries, Nicola. Good morning, all.
Morning.
So, did everyone hear me okay? Okay. So for the last eighteen months, I've been, the authority's been sitting on numerous EU exit related meetings, which finished in January last year, and it was agreed we will leave. And since then, it's shifted to a board of delivery protocol group. And with regards to the fund, and this has been brought up pre Brexit and currently at every meeting. I sat on a meeting a month ago and raised it with the lead, who is the one for the H M R C to report directly to the Cabinet Office. And as Nicola alluded to, it's not just ourselves who are raising this issue, it's, it's every port health authority. Because the impact, but the potential impact could have serious financial implications as we move forward. So it's something governments are very much aware of, and especially the groups that we report to.
Thank you. Thank you. And I've got a further question on the staffing front because I note that you've got a vacancy which you've had for a while. And you were saying that you expect to fill it by the end of the year or early next year. That's still quite a delay. I'm wondering if there are other problems as well. Are there, is, is that due to COVID or is there a shortage of suitable people for those kinds of jobs?
Yeah, councillor, it is an ongoing issue for Port Health. There is a shortage of port health. Port Health. And Port Health officers are qualified environmental health officers. And so there are other fields of work that they can work in, in food safety, in pollution control, in housing, in health and safety, in local authorities. Port Health is a very demanding occupation. And so we do find that a lot of environmental health officers, they start Port Health, they have to be trained, they are subjected to a six-month training programme, because unfortunately, the degree in environmental health and also the professional training does not equip you with the competences that are required for Port Health. And so they have to retrain. And we do find that that becomes quite onerous for officers. And they may be thinking, it's just not for me. And so, you know, the last recruitment that we had, because we've just recently recruited a new officer, I think Chris, was it with two, two people that we had, and then we only shortlisted one. So there is a problem. Central government are aware of it, that there is a problem in recruiting Port Health. And so at the moment, they are exploring what skills could we have? And it's something that I'm also doing in-house. How can we obtain these skills with a much maybe lesser qualification or job role? And that's something that I'm hoping to explore in the next financial year. Can I maybe split the skills and have one job and utilise a lower graded job to undertake some of the skills? So we are currently exploring what skills we have within the team and who can do what rather than just the Port Health officer, because it has been an ongoing issue. It's been a long outstanding issue. And this was the reason why Port Health designed the Imported Food Control Training Course and also the International Health Training Course. And I also participated in a working group with the Food Standards Agency to overhaul and design an imported food training course to be delivered to inland officers to assist improving competencies in that area. But I can't really say that it's a job that attracts a number of officers because of how demanding the job is.
Thank you, Nicola. That's depressing, actually, but I know you're, you're working very hard to find ways around that. I see that Dave has another question, which may be a follow-up on all of that. And go ahead, Dave.
Nicola, I was on Port Health in 2015 to 2016, and I recall at the time that you had some, some setup where you had, currently I'm wrong, where you had trainees from the local universities, Liverpool University. Am I right in that? Do you remember correctly?
Yes, that's right. I mean, this is the, the reason why we designed the training programme. The idea was that we would deliver a training programme to university students to tell them at that time, because it's very underrepresented Port Health. And I know certainly when I was an environmental health student, I didn't know about what Port Health. It was only as I trained that I found out about Port Health. So we deliver a lecture to try to set the seed of you can work in Port Health at an early stage, students. In addition to that, the authority still continues to offer a bursary to train these students to undertake their professional training with the authority. And we actually do have one of the students working with us. She's currently a Port Health technical officer. She's unable to be a Port Health officer until she successfully passes her professional exams. And I know that she's about three quarters through achieving that. So yes, we do invest in the students. Financially, we're only able to offer one first replacement. And I'm not just financially, resource-wise, because it does take a lot of, you know, time for the officers to train the students. But yes, we do.
That scenario is still ongoing, Len, and I'll answer that with Liverpool University, yeah?
Yes, it still is ongoing.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? I see Lena has raised her hand. Lena Simmich, would you like to go ahead, please?
Okay. And thank you very much for this report. I wanted to follow up a bit on this, which is about universities, because I work at a university as well. And obviously now we are moving all of our content, or half of our content online. So I was just wondering if, you know, you are doing the same, because obviously you're providing all this training programmes. So have you talked about, or have you already done some of the online lectures or workshops for the students? So that's one, one point. I mean, obviously, since you've had an issue in recruitment, so it would be an important thing to adapt to. Then another thing is, I remember last year, we were about to have a tour, and that never happened. And I think it would be really good for us as members to actually have this tour, and we could try to organise that again. And then my final point is, I'm sorry, I'm just putting everything in, is about, well, it's basically cruise liners. And there was an article in the Financial Times, is this the end of the line for cruise ships? So does this have implications for you as well, you know, because we are in these uncertain times financially, and how do we stand with cruise liners investing now? Thank you.
Thank you. And in regards to your, your first question in relation to the course, because the course is not a priority function of the service because of the COVID, I have currently suspended the course. And because obviously our, our resources at the moment are focusing on recovering the service and dealing with the COVID, excuse me, as well as also preparing for the EU transition. So it's essential that I focus my staffing resources to more priority sort of services that we provide and functions that we provide rather than the training. And the training most certainly will be something that we will reinstate, maybe by next year. It maybe needs to be suspended till the following year. And during that time, yes, we will consider how we better deliver the course to students. And in regards to the tour of the port, unfortunately, we didn't get significant numbers to undertake the tour. And I don't know now how that situation will work in terms of COVID restrictions and certainly measures that are being applied at the port. It's definitely something we can consider, but probably it's something that will be considered later on in the year when all services start to become accustomed to what potential restrictions. Or we are very clear on how, you know, COVID has evolved in terms of what measures need to be put in place. But I'm more than happy to always host a tour to members. But as I said, this will all be dependent on the evolving situation of the outbreak. In regards to the cruise ships, I was invited a couple of weeks ago to attend a meeting with a view to draft a code of practice for all cruise ships of the UK to use to, which would consider restrictions, and that it would be a standard operating procedure for them all, so they all implement consistent measures on the cruise ship with a view to reinstating them. The cruise ships, when they arrive to the port of Liverpool, what we will be asking, very similar to what we ask with vessels, is the relevant information to assess any potential outbreak, any documentation that they have, post standard operating procedures in regards to controlling any outbreak. And it would just be consistent with what we do now with our, with our cruise ships. For the service, it's very unlikely there will be any implication for us apart from your additional workload, because we will have to do that for every cruise ship that arrives into the port of Liverpool, just to ensure from a risk-based approach that they are not posing a risk to our borders. But as far as I'm aware, I think the cruise ships are currently still suspended. I have a very good relationship with the divisional manager of the cruise terminal. And we went down there before the COVID and had a meeting with her and her team. And we discussed restriction measures. We reviewed their processes and procedures on what they have in place to try to mitigate any spread of COVID and how they would deal with any cases of COVID. So we're in close communication with them, and they will constantly update me to tell me when the vessel's arriving. So we will just work with them in the future to make sure that everything is fine in terms of their processes and procedures. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? And I see that Christine Howard, Councilwoman Howard, has got her hand raised. Would you like to go ahead, please?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I've got two questions, if I can. So the first one is, does your new status as a border control post change anything operationally? Or is it, does it, everything just remain the same? And then the second question is just in relation to the business as usual plan that you mentioned as opposed to a BCP plan. Do you think that there are any issues that have been created in the easement measures that have been put in place? So thinking specifically around the easements around processes in ship sanitation inspections. Does the, does the process that's being used now cut it? Or do you think that there are misses that are, are happening because of that? And would you consider adopting the current measures as the, the business as usual?
Thank you. So in, in regards to your first question, the BCP predominantly focused on systems and legislation. And in regards to the inspection facility, it also changed slightly some of the requirements of the inspection facilities. And we've since achieved those. So it's implemented now, but it was just some minor structural changes that needed to be put in place to enable us to then be designated as a BCP. And in regards to the business as usual and the BCP, we're constantly evolving the, the business as usual with government guidance and changes. And the biggest implementation that was quite a few actually, in terms of adapting easement measures. First of all, was the massive change of processes, because we already have standard operating processes in place on how we will do clearances. And so we completely had to overhaul that. And, and, you know, credit to obviously Chris Rankin, business operations and team leader, he had to completely overview that and ensure that it was implemented because it was his staff, that there was a predominant impact on that. And, and so we had to change internal processes, first of all. So the idea with some of the documents now at the moment, where they are electronic, while we are checking them from an electronic perspective, central government still require us to do verification checks on all those documents. So there will be an immense amount of workload towards the end, that we will then need to verify all these electronic documents. So that's something that Chris has had to plan for, that he needs to make sure that that process is in place. And we start to do the verification check of hard copy documents with the electronic ones. And then if they identify any issues, we then have to take responsive action in relation to that. In addition to imported food controls, we had to suspend physical checks of consignments. But physical checks levels are set by Europe, and so they didn't adapt those levels of checks. So, for example, they will suggest 20% of all beef products must be subject to controls, subject to the physical test. And so we need to make sure that we still keep achieving those levels. And we've since implemented that to recover the percentages and make sure that we are still hitting the required European level percentages with COVID adaptations. In addition to that, with the ship sanitation, while we are not undertaking physical checks, the charging scheme for physical checks is determined by the size of the vessel. But because we are predominantly doing electronic documentation checks and not boarding, it was agreed that there was going to be a flat rate that would be chargeable. So we've lost the revenue that we would have, and that's monitored weekly by me and the finance officer of Mersey Port Health. So we are now at the moment mapping how much revenue we potentially have lost because we have adapted the flat rate. We reinstated waters because we suspended those. And we also was monitoring that we lost finances predominantly on not undertaking water samples. And so we've since reinstated those. And I'm actually out on Sunday at five thirty doing a waters on a vessel. So we are starting to reset the service. And with that, we will start recovering the finances. With the physical checks for imported food, they've been deferred. So we will catch up with them and we will catch up with the finances there. But unfortunately, from the ship sanitation perspective, we won't be able to catch up with that. And in regards to adopting easement adaptations, it wouldn't be something that I would be able to determine. The imported food easements are determined by European Commission and the UK. And so when they say, which they will make a decision at the end of July for implementation on the first of August, we will need to be ready to maybe reinstate back to how we were, or alternatively, adapt to whatever they say or whatever they propose. So while we have a business as usual plan in place, it's an evolving plan that will need to keep evolving, depending on the information and advice that we get from central government.
Thanks, Nicola.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? No? Well, thank you very much, everybody. So that is the end of our formal agenda. Does anybody have any other business that they'd like to raise? No? So then, all I need to do is to thank everybody for your attendance. Thank you for your questions. Thank you again to Nicola and the team, all the huge amount of very thorough work that you're doing. And just make sure that everybody's clear about the dates going forward, fifteenth of October this year, fourteenth of January next year, and eleventh of March next year. And we'll get more information nearer the time as to whether those will be virtual or in a physical location. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Thank you all. Bye now.
Thank you. Bye bye. Bye bye.
Thank you, colleagues. Thank you to everyone viewing us on today's live stream. And that concludes today's proceedings. Thank you, everyone.